Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Twenty-two. And we're going to discuss more about property cleanup, public comment, then adjourn. I'll look for a motion to approve of agenda.
I have a...
What was that?
What was that?
She muted her...
Hi, this is Megan. I would like to request that we make a change in the agenda. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I can't... So, I would like to... Michelle Peckrell and I have been working hard on a version of the ordinance as you asked us to do. And I would like to request that we take some time for us to report back to you on what we've written, and what, and why, and where it came from, and then go through the requirements that we have written so far to see what you all think.
Okay. The only thing is, is that we're not working on an ordinance. We're working on a paragraph for the bylaws. That's what we're supposed to be doing. The ordinance is going to be something that the town select board does.
I thought that we were going to... We agreed at the last meeting that we were going to send our ordinance to the town select board and see what they, you know, so that we would agree on the ordinance and then send it over to them.
Well, we're pretty much... I mean, we could do that if the board... Everybody wants to do that, but that's not what we were actually working on. We're supposed to be figuring out what we wanted to do for the bylaws, to put a paragraph in the bylaws that update those to going after the trash or types of trash that we want to see cleaned up.
Okay, well, yeah, but with the bylaw, if you already have however many junk cars, if we change it, you're going to be grandfathered in on the previous bylaw, and it's not going to change anything, but an ordinance would change it.
Well, we're not looking at junk cars. What we're talking about doing is going after, like, trash bags, black bag, white bags.
We realized that, but Michelle was just making a point that an ordinance...
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
An ordinance gets around the grandfathering in.
That seems the thing to do, I guess. You know, we asked him to do something, downsize the ordinance, more or less, make it smaller. And that's what we're pretty much going to do tonight, I think.
Okay, so I propose that we take some time for Michelle and me, then, is what I'm saying, to put it, to go over it, and, you know, and then decide, do we want to send this over to the select board as our recommendation for an ordinance? Because I think that, I think that this way we would be able to... Fred Miller and, well, our town health officer and our town zoning administrator and the police, if we so want them to, will be able to ticket people and to get this ball rolling rather than waiting to go to court, which is what you have to do with bylaws.
I think I know what you're saying, yes.
I've been saying that for three different meetings now. Explain the difference between bylaw and ordinance.
Hold on, Megan. It does take an ordinance to enforce it. That's what you're talking about. You are correct, it does take that. But as a planning commission, that's not what we're working on. We weren't working on what an ordinance is or how to write an ordinance. That wasn't our job to do. We're supposed to, or should be, looking at just the bylaws and making sure that the bylaws are what we're looking at with the details in it of what we're looking for. And then that goes, then we approve that, and that would go forward to the select board to amend. Because they already have an ordinance in place. They can just amend the ordinance they have also. They have an ordinance for junk stuff, but we weren't looking at junk cars and that type of thing.
Can somebody read the bylaw that I... I'm right now, not near... I only have my iPad, I don't have bylaws. Can somebody read what the current bylaw is?
It says... I have mine.
Thanks.
"No refuse shall be dumped upon any part of the lot outside buildings constructed thereon. Storage of refuges outside buildings shall be completely enclosed containers, secure from animals, screened from view from public ways and adjoining properties, and located to minimize fire hazards and to prevent threats to water quality in the event of a container failure." And that's it. So, I propose...
Yeah, but I mean, that covers it. That's why now we actually need an ordinance to enforce that, and that's where you flesh it out. We're already talking about trash, we're talking about health problems, we're talking about environmental in the bylaw. Now it needs to go to an ordinance that can actually be enforced with fines and things like that.
And really, I really have to say that you guys, we've been talking about this for at least three meetings, and I keep telling you that I'm working on an ordinance, and, you know, there is a difference between bylaws and ordinances, and you just blow it off, it seems to me, if you're telling me, "Oh, now we're going to write bylaws." That's not what we've been saying, John, I'm sorry, it's just not.
Excuse me, hello?
Hi.
This is Mindy Jo.
We still have to approve the agenda.
What was that?
Yeah, we need to approve the agenda.
So, can we have time on the agenda? Can we have time to go over this?
I'm fine with it.
Yes, we can do it.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Oh, I move that we move to accept the agenda.
And we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, I'll do roll call. Jimmy?
Aye.
Stacy?
Stacy, aye.
Megan?
Yeah, aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And then Brian?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Let's... Motion for approval of minutes. Everybody read through those or have looked at them that are able to vote on that. I don't know if we have enough to vote on it, because...
I don't think so.
Michelle and Brian were out.
No, I don't think we do.
So, we only got three here right now, I think. We won't be able to vote on that.
I would like to call everyone's attention to Rebecca Dragon's note at the end of the minutes.
Which part of it? Oh, yeah, yeah, the note on there.
Is it done, or... Somebody? I don't have the minutes in front of me.
There were multiple moments.
Yeah. One page back here. One information, yep.
Basically, Rebecca said that it was embarrassing to watch the last meeting for various reasons, which we don't need to go into right now. But I just would like to say that there was a lot of yelling back and forth over one another. And, John, that is... I would like to respectfully ask you, when people interrupt and don't have the floor, that you could say, please, you know, so-and-so has the floor. That's part of your role as, you know, chair of the meeting, and I think things would go a lot smoother, especially when we have a crowd, like we did last time.
Okay.
I know that I interrupt a lot, and feel free to shut me out. I mean, to respectfully ask me to...
It's a little bit difficult for zoning. I don't think we've had many meetings with the television, you know, back and forth. I think we all, we can raise our hand here at the table.
Right, we're used to being inside.
We're used to being inside.
Yeah, it was really, you know, hectic last time.
Well, we're here tonight.
Good, okay.
Okay, so I want to... Everybody had a chance on the minutes and look for a motion and a second on that.
I think we need to table them, because we don't have enough people, right? Put that forward to the next meeting.
So, Brian was out, Michelle wasn't here. That's all we got is Megan, so we do have three, yes.
Oh, we have three, is that enough?
Brian wasn't here, right?
We need it... No, we need five. We need the originals on that, that were in that meeting. And that wasn't... So, that's not going to be enough.
Can't approve the meeting, the minutes.
All right, well, we're going to move those to the next meeting to approve. We don't have enough for that one. So then we'll move on to property cleanup discussion. Go ahead, Megan or Michelle, either one.
Okay, Michelle was going to speak to the property values, I think. Is that correct, Michelle? Do you have...
Yeah, well, I think you were going to talk about, first, the, what was it, section four?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, if you want to start.
Okay, all right, well, what I wanted to say, though, before we get started, so you would want to turn to page three. It says three of eight, but we really only have six pages. I cut it down a lot. So, what I'd like to point out, for some reason, I'm only seeing Michelle. Michelle, could you...
I don't know.
Okay, so, I think that one of the problems that we have had with doing anything about the trash that makes our beautiful town look so awful as you drive through on seven, particularly, or through, is that we all of us, regardless of our political stance or whatever, we all feel very strongly about the rights of private property. We talk a lot about people's rights to do what they want on their own property. And I just liked this particular piece that I got from Essex Junction. Now I'm seeing Brian. Because, Brian, I've got this... Can I... Can you put me back on the full screen? All right.
Megan, that's a setting that you have to do from your computer.
Okay.
But everyone can hear you, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is that with every right that we have in this country, we also have obligations, and we have duties, okay? And that's why I liked this piece, which is partly from Essex Junction, which I have changed. So, "The Duty of Owners and Occupants." It's on page three, and this is what it says. So, "The general requirement is that it shall be the responsibility of each owner, agent, occupant, or lesssee to keep his or her property free of litter, refuse, garbage, junk, solid waste, and trash. He or she shall be responsible for removing litter, refuse, garbage, junk, junk motor vehicles in excess of three, solid waste, or trash accumulating on said property." Okay? So, that's the general. Now, there is repetition in there, and that is the way it goes with legal writing. So, you have a lot of repetition, and it's, you know, it's kind of frustrating, but so, just bear with me. So, that was A, that's the general requirement. B, litter is prohibited. Litter prohibited. No owner, agent, occupant, lesssee of any property shall allow the storage or accumulation of litter, refuse, garbage, junk, waste, or trash on the exterior of said property outside of a receptacle that is covered, secured, and maintained so as to prevent blowing, spilling, scattering, or leaking of the contents therein. Okay? So, your junk, you have to clean it up, and it has to be in a receptacle of some sort. Now, this C is kind of an extension of that, and I think we could put... I could easily combine B and C. "Waste not to accumulate except in enclosed suitable storage containers." This addresses, "Plastic bags, even when tied, do not constitute a covered and secured receptacle, and thus, accumulation of said bags is not permitted. This requirement shall not apply to an area designated and approved by the town as a permitted disposal site." Because imagine if you tried to say that you couldn't have plastic bags at the transfer station. But, so, I think we could just put B and C together as litter. And then D, "Litter prevention and control in adjacent and surrounding areas. It shall be the responsibility of each proprietor and each operator of any business, industry, or institution to keep the surrounding area free of litter, refuse, garbage, junk, junk motor vehicles in excess of three, solid waste, or trash. Surrounding areas include: public and private sidewalks, roads and alleys, traveled ways, grounds, parking lots, loading and unloading areas, and all vacant lots leased by such establishments or institutions. Removal of said trash shall be performed in accordance with this ordinance." Okay? So, we are asking store owners to pick up the sidewalk. We're trying to get a grip on, not just people's front yards, but, you know... And then, I thought that we should really specify that if somebody wants to keep their junk, or whatever they're calling it, their valuable property, "If an owner, agent, occupant, or lesssee deems above-named junk to be of use or value, he or she is required to screen it from view of traveled way and abutting property occupants." Okay? So, we are specifically asking for screening. And then, now, this last one, I'm not sure about this one. I've asked two lawyers and got two different opinions. Mike Gardner had a third opinion. I am hoping to do an end run around some of these, well, anyway, some of the worst offenders that we see, that people see as they go through panel. "Outdoor sales, yard sales, and flea markets shall not be conducted for more than three consecutive days, after which time all evidence of sale and merchandise, including display tables, shall be removed by..." And then, whenever, "By," when we can fill that in. I put in the closest subsequent open transfer station day, which is very awkward. "Attaching a free sign to said merchandise or covering it with a tarpaulin does not fulfill this requirement. This ordinance does not apply to farm stands and outdoor sales of agricultural products." That's it. So, it's a kind of a strict, you know, listing of people's duties, their obligations, that go along with their property rights, you know, that keep the property values up and make the quality of life nicer for all of us.
Okay, Megan, I have a question. Does that, that one part just before the last one you just read was... Does that include what you're talking about for... Is it just containers, or does that include fencing? So, somebody puts up a fence.
No, only if people don't want to... If they have too much of a big pile of something, and they don't, can't put it in a container, then they need to screen it. And I did define screening earlier in the definitions, because you have to have all these... Every word has to be defined, seems like. And I said that screening could be shrubs, or trees, or outbuildings. So, it's to hide the junk from the view of abutting households or traveled way.
All right, well, I'm thinking we should add fencing, if you're going to put that in there.
Oh, didn't I have fencing? Yeah, that'd be pretty important, wouldn't it? Yes, means, screening means fencing, shrubs, trees, or outbuildings, so as to hide.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I know one of the things Ronnie had talked about was the three-day limit.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't think that would work, only because the gentleman that's coming in for, if he even re-appeals, but the gentleman that's coming in is not applying for just a short-term thing. He's looking at year-round, year-round sale over there, so...
Well, I don't know.
I would have to figure that out.
Yeah, I think that was definitely something we need to talk about. I would say, you know...
Didn't we...
You know, his way, the way of leaving everything out in the parking lot, or whatever you want to call that big yard there, just leaving it out for literally years on end. Some of it sitting on tables, some of it indoor furniture that's just degrading. That is just... Right. Somehow, we need to... That's why the three-day, I figured...
Okay, we... Hold on a second, Jimmy?
Yeah, I thought we referred those people with the tag sales to the DRB and let them handle that.
I just don't know how long that the DRB can stall certain parties who are, you know... If, I understood that they rejected the application because it was incomplete.
Right, correct, right.
But, I mean, it's more than just the application was incomplete. The history of the treatment of that property has been horrendous.
I think, I think you can go back to the junk ordinance there, the rubbish ordinance, and start there, and refer the other part that he wants for the year-round tag sale to the DRB.
Okay, so you're saying, you think...
I think you go in there and make a plan.
You're saying specifically mentioning outdoor sales is not useful. Okay. Would anyone else have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I think if it's a business, it should be under one, you know, stature. If it's a residence and there's junk out there, it's another thing. And I think, you know, other than safety, I think you're looking at a blight ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
That's pretty much what this is, yeah.
I mean, it's blight, you know? I think that's kind of the bottom-line definition here.
Yeah, I just, I think we were trying, I don't know if junk is even a kind of word. We were attempting to not offend, I guess.
Yeah. And if I can just, if I can just throw my two cents in, I think it would be detrimental to start fining people that have this junk in their yards. I think there's got to be a better way to do this, to clean this up.
Thank you very much. We have been talking about that for about the last three meetings, and there was a huge hue and cry on both sides. So, I agree with you. I think that incentives work a lot better. And it, but, and I noticed, John, was that your piece that you sent, you sent in an email? That you sent to our town email? I think there was a paragraph that I think you had written, or you had picked up somewhere?
Oh, yes, yes, I did have, I had sent one.
Yeah, and I think that did address some of this. Did you have that with you?
Yes, I do, I have it. It's right here, I got this. I put in there just something to, for people to start to think about a little bit of it, something I was running through my head. I put it upon a complaint to the town health officer or zoning officer, and inspection would be completed. That way, they were not just having people running around town trying to pick out people.
Right, 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 right.
It would be on a complaint, and if the inspection reveals refuge or solid waste, that would be addressed, which would fall under the health officer anyway, through state law, under my understanding of that. Then it would sit, then I had, "All refuge must be removed from the property to create a safe environment per health rules of the state Vermont laws. In town bylaws, issue, and any issues deemed a health risk will need to be cleaned up. Items including solid waste, household trash, demolition debris, and hazardous materials. Penalties and failures can result in fees and fines."
Right, right, right. So, basically, I don't think that says anything that isn't said here. I think we need to be so specific so that people can't wiggle out of things. I agree that we, and I don't know, Michelle, from what you have said, that we think that incentives would work a lot better.
Right.
But a lot of pushback from Tom Schuie and from other people about incentives in the last meeting.
And, Megan, I think, I do kind of agree with Tom Schuie on it, only because of the cost that people were paying. I think he made a pretty good point that if he's there to getting a free day, we shouldn't be trying to give people free days, because it really goes against the people who are trying to do it right.
They live in this town.
That's my feeling. That's just my feeling, too. I think he was kind of correct on that. But as far as cleaning up, I mean, we've got to come up with something. That's what we're absolutely getting... I think we're getting closer to something here solid. It's just, we got to make that fine line, finish those fine lines that we can do to start getting it cleaned up.
So, do you think that we could, like, at the next meeting, like, well, you know, if you write an ordinance, you really do have to have a section on enforcement and penalties. I mean, it's, I know that they probably won't, for myriad reasons, they probably won't work. A lot, some of this is socioeconomic, these people, you know, some people just can't afford to go to the dump, some of it is personality, whatever, whatever. Some people really get their back up when you find them, and they act worse. So, I, but I think, even so, if we're going to send it a recommended ordinance, we need to do it by the book, and the book shows, you know, the ordinance from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It includes enforcement.
Hold on, Jimmy's got something.
What we're missing, and Stacy mentioned just what we're talking about, abandoned properties. He lived next door with one, and that there's a lot of abandoned properties around with nobody really...
Yeah.
What, you know?
Gosh, is that? Maybe we should, you know. I mean, I could add another, so you. You know, I I would really like to have this. I would like us to vote, you know, on this. I think it's uh, I think it's correctly written and um covers most of what we want. I'll put in something, uh. I don't know, what 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 can we do about abandoned properties?
I'm just mentioning, but I think you're on the right track, we could vote on pretty much what you're doing here and uh get a start on it. And then with abandoned properties, you know, at some point.
I mean, if if we have to clean up abandoned properties as a town cost, I know Fred mentioned. A bunch about that, but if we have to clean that up, we might have to take a hit on it at first. Um, to take and go and clean it up as a town. Um, but then uh whoever's taxpayer uh titled to it would, could, we could attach it to taxes. Or tax bill, and if it doesn't get paid, it's, it goes into a.
Catch up in a lane?
Repossession, uh repossession on it, yeah.
Yeah, everybody talks about putting a lien on it, putting a lien on it. That takes years and it it just.
Well, I think, I think.
It does, but if it's sitting there for years, it didn't get it, didn't get cleaned up, it's worse than years of holding taxes on it.
Wait the years and do it.
Right.
Well, okay.
I have a question about that, right, so you have an, you have an abandoned property, but it's still owned by somebody. So if it gets cleaned up and you tack it on to their taxes. If, I mean, obviously giving them the opportunity, you have thirty days to clean it up, if you don't clean it up, the town will clean it up. So then if you attach it to their taxes. Um, how how long does it take to take possession of the property if they're not paying? The the tax and the the penalty for not having cleaned up?
Marcus and Pla- Pla- classic.
I I could, I'm not sure how that would work on that, uh, we'll have to might get some clarity on it from Ellen or something on it, but. I think it goes two years if you don't pay your town taxes before they start process.
Okay, I mean, that, I mean, that makes sense, I mean, you, if you're cleaning it up and the chance of the people not, I mean. If they pay the taxes and pay the the penalty, you know, it's it's cleaned up and then the co- the the cost is covered as well. Um, and if not, the property gets taken and the town's got property they could sell. To somebody that, yeah, I mean, that that makes sense.
Brian, I wanted to ask you a question since you're on the select board.
No.
Oh, you're not in.
No, he's not on.
He's gonna be on, he'll probably be on.
Sorry, Brian, I keep messing that up.
Used to be.
I think of you being on it, never mind, okay.
He's running again, it's a campaign speech.
Yeah.
So, um. So.
You gotta unmute, you gotta unmute yourself, Brian.
All right.
I think you're muted, can.
Brian, you're muted.
There it is.
Sorry.
I wasn't speaking, but, okay.
So, okay, so, so I I think we need clarity on the outdoor sales. You, uh, well, what what's the feeling, you don't like it at all or what?
Let, I I I do have a question, sorry, cause I. I know about this guy at the flea market with the DRB, what what is the actual story of? So we have somebody that wants to have a year round flea market, is that the the deal?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he applied for originally.
And it's out, and it's outside, correct?
He wanted to build a pavilion, the same as allegiance.
Okay, alright, so.
That was initially why he came, yeah.
Alright, so it'd be undercover of something, so it's not just sitting out in the rain.
Right, mm hmm.
Okay, and where?
And and I think he wanted, uh, it was a, one of the buildings, he had a storage building or something there that he was gonna do a.
Trail.
Um, like a inside sales of that, inside that building.
Okay, and then he just, and whereabouts is, was this and for?
Where?
Where, yeah.
Uh, next to the Roger's Roost.
Roger's Roost, okay.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot next door, yeah.
So is 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 that property still owned by the same person?
Yes.
Yes.
So could he?
History there, not a, not the kind of history that reassures a person that this will be a nicely run business like up in Wilmington.
I don't think, I don't think it's even close.
No.
No.
I mean, if it's, maybe he's gonna have a pavilion, is it something that can be screened with fencing?
It could be, that would.
As a re- put as a requirement?
It was kind of, uh, when it was before the DRB, it was kind of tossed around, things of that nature. But his uh application was so incomplete that he just pulled it.
Okay, so he's, so he's not really falling into the um, the category, hang on, I got Megan's things here. Of the three day.
No.
Yard sales type of thing.
No, no.
Well, how about if we um?
I mean, that would, I think, work for everyone else in town, a private place, but businesses, I think.
Well, he has to have a permit.
Even like Stacy said, the same thing is, to have them on a different standard, cause that's gonna be the DRB.
So we have to add.
It's not a business because he hasn't gotten an approval.
Right, right.
He has to have a permit, right, to run a business.
Right.
Right, right, they had to come and get a, would wind up getting a permit or something else to DRB. Or through zoning, one way or the other.
And, you know, I think he's left.
Yeah, so it's a.
Maybe just for the winter.
I I really don't think, I don't know what other people, what your impression is, you guys. My impression, and I'm not, you know, driving around all day long, obviously, but uh. Flea markets, yard sales, most people, they clean it up, you know, sometimes it takes a week. But I, you know, he's really the the worst offender, and that's why I put a three day limit on it, but I guess we can't do that.
I I I think that let the DR, I, now now that I've heard the whole story on it, I think maybe need to let the DRB. Cause if he's trying to run it as a business, he actually has to have some sort of licensing from the state to run a business. Um. And insurance, things like that.
Sales tax.
So.
Tax, yep.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Brian.
I've mentioned this before, but we have to be very careful, you can't keep calling somebody out individually.
That's right.
Now you're targeting them.
Yes.
And any ordinance you pass, they can take us to court and they have a really good case that you're targeting specifically them.
Okay.
So if they can get it thrown out and then we have to cover the legal expenses.
Right.
So I just wanna remind people of that.
We haven't mentioned his name yet.
Well, you've.
Right.
We have guardrails.
Well, I I'll just say anybody that's going to Bennington on a regular safe basis, and I've heard a zillion people say that's a disgusting thing, and I don't know how you allow it.
Our personal opinions aside, you can't discriminate against individuals and craft laws and ordinances targeted toward one specific.
Just deny his permit, that's all we did.
Okay, Brian, so I propose that we remove F. Okay, we just take that whole outdoor market thing, take that out.
Well, I'm I'm not saying about outdoor markets, I'm s- I'm saying that you've described the property, the location. You've described the personality of the, of the property owner.
Mm hmm.
I I I strongly advise you to stop.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, well, point well taken. I would say also that we don't, we probably, uh, where I think we reached unanimity that we don't want to include that. Outdoor market section in this, am I correct? Should we vote on it?
Well, I I maybe it's, it's, okay. Flea markets, like large scale flea markets like Wilmington, we leave something like that under the DRB. And if somebody is just having a table at the end of their driveway. Trying to sell some stuff, do the the three day or a week limit or whatever.
Okay, okay.
And just, you know, if anybody in town wants to open a large scale flea market, they're gonna have to go in front of the DRB, no matter who they are.
So we'll just say outdoor sales, yard sales and flea markets, then we can leave in the three day thing, but uh. We just add aside from permitted businesses or something like that. Exclusive of permitted businesses, permitted businesses, right?
That's good, I I would, I'm not, I'm still not sure on the three days, o- only because I keep thinking about. People that are out there trying to sell things, I know some people do set up on a weekend. And then it might be another weekend or two after before they can sit out there again for the weekend.
Yeah, but they shouldn't be leaving that stuff, that's what we're saying. Uh, I know people do it all over, like, like that guy on the, on Route twenty two on the way, anyway.
Right, but that's.
This is New York, this is New York.
Right, but I.
Guy in New York sells little yard gnomes.
Well, I think what's happening though is it's lump, that would be lumping in. Everybody's trying to go out and do something and it's, that's not what we're really after again, we're we're only trying to clean up.
Alright.
What is really trash, not people just out selling for the weekends.
Alright, okay, I got that.
If it turns into trash is something else, but it's, I don't think that way.
Okay, good, so uh, we will remove that.
Hold on, Megan, hold on, Brian, go ahead.
So. Have we actually heard from the select board on their desire to push this?
Haven't heard much from the select board on that, um, other than Mike talked about it when we had him come to the meeting. And said that, you know, we thought we were in the right direction and trying to do something with it.
Well, it's it's not, it's not the. I don't think the planning commission should be trying to push this without at least some kind of board guidan- guidance, cause. We could go through all this, and if they don't have the stomach for it, it goes nowhere. So perhaps a representative of the commission should go before the board. And talk them about it.
I'll do that, since I wrote it, most of it. I put it, cobbled it together, Michelle and I can do that, or I can do it.
Right, I think our feelings were to get something together on it and then take it to them to see if it's something that they would be willing to do and. And wanna move forward on.
Okay, so were there, uh, I I think that what we would wanna do then, we would.
Make a motion.
Wait a minute, whoa, Jimmy.
Good to get.
We wanna, uh, I will clean this up a little, boot some repetition. And then, um, we'll, I'll bring it, or or do you want me to just uh run with it without section F? Without the flea market business? And just say, this is.
Yeah, I think the flea market should be out, you're not, we're not looking at that.
That's history.
Okay, gotcha, that's done, alright, it's all crossed out.
It's not a business.
Huh, what?
Yeah, non-business things.
Yeah, but I I don't think, I really don't think yard sales and they're they're not a big issue.
No.
So I think we're good, so Jimmy, you're wanting me to add abandoned properties?
No, I'm I'm just tossing it out there, I, you know, I just.
I think that's going maybe a little too far, I'm not sure, I think this is just really based on trash and litter.
I agree with you totally, no, I I actually I wanna make a motion that you and Michelle go to the select board.
Well, with this cleaned up a little?
What you got, yes, cause I I think we're taking too big, big bite of the apple for this thing, I mean. We we're in abandoned property with this, with that, and what we really wanna do is start kinda small.
Right.
Not find a lot of people, uh, let them, give them some time, but not a lot, and uh. You know, if you come across abandoned property, then we'll deal with that another time.
Okay, so when the select board writes the ordinance and they can decide all this stuff about.
Right, right.
How much time and.
Right, right.
On us.
We're just hearing in on garbage.
Right, we're just, we're just trying to bring something.
Yeah, we can suggest better definitions.
You guys, oh, we need the definitions, yeah, probably, um.
Did you clean that one up and send it to everybody too?
Okay, you want to send it to you first and then and then uh get on the agenda for the next board meeting?
Yep.
Yes. Jimmy, you wanna make a motion on that and we'll.
Yeah, more or less, uh.
Move that.
Michelle and uh you, Dagan, Megan, I know, Megan, I know who you are. I'm an older guy, it doesn't come to my mouth sometimes, to my mind, okay? Move on with what you got.
I'm the litter queen in this town.
I know that, I know that very well, I watch you a lot of times pick up, I was part of, okay, I've seen you around town. Picking up.
So we have a motion to.
What do you move?
We we have a motion to to go forward with it, we have a second?
Wait, can we just say to present section four duty of owners and occupants to the, to the select board?
It's your ballgame.
Make it more vague, like. Present to the select board ideas for cleaning up. To start the conversation with them.
For town cleanup, yeah.
Yeah, or property cleanups for town cleanup. And get get them involved, cause ultimately they're the legislative part of the the town. So it'll be up to them, I mean, we, they can form a, they can form a subcommittee and invite us to participate as the planning commission. Manpower wise, but it's it's ultimately their responsibility to draft the legislation. We can help point them in the right direction.
I don't know where that, I had understood that that's what they had asked us to do.
Okay, well, that's what I, that's what I wanna make sure is, yo, what kind of buy-in have they already given us? One, one board speaking individ- one board member speaking individually does not the board make.
Yeah, yeah, and I think Fred and Fred and you, John and Mike Gardner, we're trying to work on this together as as I understood it. Is that correct?
Yes, we, this is what we're trying to work on, is getting something together for it.
Okay.
That's what we were looking at doing.
And I will send a copy, a cleaned up copy with a little less repetition. Uh, I guess I, um, the the, I I guess when I go into um the town. To the select board, I'm sorry, I can hand them the definitions and all that other. Uh, stuff, which just really comes from um the Vermont League of Cities and Towns template, so. I could just hand it to them and say, here, you, you know, do what you will of that. But just what the meat of it is this, uh, the rights and uh, the duties of owners and occupants.
Yeah, uh, Megan, all you had, all you had to do is uh send it to Megan.
Yeah.
And she'll forward it to the select board anyway, cause so they'll have time to review it going into it.
So I'll send her a final draft of section four and, you know.
Yes.
Good, and then she, uh. Um, do uh Michelle and I need to contact the select board ourselves, or will Megan do that for us?
Megan, yeah.
Megan will set that all up, cause she's gotta get it in a warrant and and put it in minute or into their agendas.
Good, great, are we even gonna have to vote on it, wait a minute, are we gonna vote on this?
Well, it's been a motion made.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything we really need to vote on. Okay, I mean, we're just requesting to go before the select board to present ideas and information.
No, we're not, that's wrong, Brian, we're gonna present this. What I just read to you, that's what I'm presenting.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Ideas, you know.
Yeah, we're not, okay.
Very clearly written out, so I mean, we're not gonna go in and chat. Okay, so if you guys agree that what Michelle and I put together is okay. To present to them as a draft of the ordinance, okay?
Right, that's what we're saying, yes.
I withdraw the motion.
We're gonna run with the, run with taking that or sending that into them.
Okay. Uh, so.
I don't think we need to vote on it either, cause it's not something we're trying to put in, our thing is just a mo- uh movement to send it to them.
Alright, good, yeah, it won't be part of ours, okay.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah, I think the thing about abandoned houses is just a step too far, sorry.
Hey.
Well, thank you, this was very productive, I thought.
You give them, we could probably put, uh, let's, let's wait on it, let's just wait on that.
Let's wait.
And we can come back to that a- after if we need to.
Reminded me of that.
We'll get the other stuff rolling, hopefully.
Alright, Michelle, did you?
Um, remind me again about the COVID money and how it can be used? Does anybody know?
Oh, it's kinda deep, I I'm not sure.
I can speak to you, I can speak about that, Michelle.
Go ahead.
Hey, Rebecca, this is Rebecca Dragon, I thought I would attend tonight. Um, so the ARPA, the ARPA money um has now been essentially deregulated enormously. And if you are a small town receiving under ten million dollars, which we definitely are that town. Um, we can just transfer the money into our general fund. um, we can just transfer the money into our general fund and manage it on our own. It is no longer subject to federal requirements around the use of the money. It can be used via, uh, through the general fund. I do know that, um, the board is intending to use this first portion we've already received towards a new pump house, which is much needed. And then probably for some town hall, the second half portion, um, I just spoke about this last week. I don't know what the board's will isn't on it yet, but my, my suggestion to them was to use that second half, which is another 509,000, um, towards, um, citizen suggested projects and have a hearing process around it. But it certainly could involve things such as incentives towards cleanup, um, larger projects like that. There's, there's a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of opportunities since we're the ones managing it and deciding, or the board is the one who's managing it and deciding how it can be used.
Very interesting. So there would be some money for incentives.
There could be if, if you, so what you would have to do is, you know, ask, talk to the board about it and you would create a plan, like a very specific plan. They're not gonna just say, here's, you know, here's $10,000 for incentives. It's like, we'd like to create a program. It's gonna be stickers that people can purchase from the town hall, whatever it is, you know, um, uh, and you got, garner ideas about it and then you present the plan and then, then that's what I, my hope is that they will be doing with that second half of the ARPA money is, um, projects like that, citizen suggested projects, unless something falls down into a sinkhole in the earth where they have to use that money for something else. But, um, you know, but, so I would just keep, keep communicating with the board that you'd like to see some, you know, community suggested, planning commission suggested. Keep sending those suggestions into the board so they see it, because the money can be used very freely.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah.
That's excellent. Thank you. The problem with the thing is that I see is that as long as we have this difference of opinion about whether or not people deserve to have, uh, incentives if they, if they can't afford to buy a, um, transfer station sticker. You know what I'm saying? As long as we get hung up on that, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make a dent. I think you're right, Stacy, that, uh, just, um, finding people isn't gonna really be effective.
Um, well, how do you even propose to, to go to somebody's house and, you know, say, we need to get this junk out of your yard?
Well, there's a health officer and there's a zoning administrator. So that's their job. And they both expressed a willingness to do it, so.
Okay. Um, Megan, are you gonna add something like that to that about, um, like what I had said about getting, um, it, a, doing it by somebody calling in or a complaint into it? Just so that we don't have somebody just running around town going, hey, I drove by this. You guys need to go clean it up. Mm-hmm. It's gotta be.
Okay, okay. There, I think that that would go under enforcement. Um, but I will suggest that. I'll make a suggestion for, for them to, uh, uh.
Why can't there be somebody driving by from one of the town boards?
Um, well, well, our town officials aren't, that's not what their, their jobs are. They usually go by complaint. So we don't have them physically driving around.
We don't have full-time enforcement.
Right, we don't have that as full-time stuff here, but also I, I would see that more like, um, I would view that myself as being targeting, because if they drive around, they didn't like somebody, they could drive by and start doing that, so.
That's a very good point.
But you are targeting. You see these houses that have garbage all over the place and you are targeting that.
Well, it's, that's why I stated that we've.
Somebody had to drive around to see this to begin with.
It's, whoever's complaining is usually a, a neighbor. Is what we've been, this is what we've had in the past anyway, has been neighbors.
I've seen this and I'm, you know, I complain to my wife.
Right.
Does nothing.
Right.
And she complains to me.
She didn't clean it up? She needs to.
But again, we don't have, our enforcement people don't drive around just doing that kind of stuff. We don't have that set up that way. So it would have to go by.
Volunteers.
I'm not sure that would be a, a question. Go to the select board.
Maybe we could pay them more and have them work longer hours. Like, like Leo Hagerty did.
Oh, now you said a name. Be careful. We gotta fold it up here.
So let's, let's say, just make those corrections in it. Send it up to, uh, Megan. She can get that forwarded out. And I will also, after the meeting here, I'll talk with Megan about seeing about, uh, if she can fit me in on one of the meetings coming up here too. Um, to go there and ask them about that, that money and see if we can put aside a small account to help with cleanups around town.
Great, that would be great, John. That would be awesome.
So if you wanted to get that sent in, I think as far as the rest of us, we're all in approval to get moving.
Um, can I say something, John?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so like, so the reason I asked about the money.
Yeah.
We, we, I brought this up before about having, you know, if we designated a few dumpster type days where we could get dumpsters set up in, say, the more problem areas that it's easier for people to get to the dumpster to dump their things. And I, I know, I went to Massachusetts and New York's gonna dump. No, it'll be for a certain amount of hours. We have, you know, people's IDs checked so that we know that they're residents. And, you know, it's like a, like a 10 to six. And people, you know, say, over on 346, people can get stuff into their cars and, you know, get it to the dumpster and dump them.
Yes.
Make a couple of trips. Cause like, I can afford a transfer station sticker. I don't have the time to do it. I'm, I give my stuff to, to the, the kid that mows my lawn and I, he said, he takes it and takes it to a dumpster. You know, so a lot of it's like people can't, can't get to transfer station, they're working. But if it's on a weekend and the dumpster's right there and we do, you know, social, social media marketing thing to let people know that there's gonna be this day. Cause people could be sitting there looking out the window going, God, I have so much trash. I just wish I had an easier way to get rid of it, because God, I do that myself.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think we can do, I mean, we, we're gonna wind up mentioning these ideas is basically all we're gonna be doing to the select board. The select board is gonna have to determine whether or not that's something that we're gonna be able to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if they want to do that, or again, like Brian said, or if they're just gonna say, huh, we don't want, really want to get into it right now. That's gonna be ultimately up to them, but all of these ideas that we have, uh, like you're saying too, that's all definitely can be brought up to them.
Okay, thanks.
I would think that's a great, you know, I, I really, I hate to, I love Tom Schuie, but I have to disagree that on that, uh, that point about insulting his, uh, his, um, you know, dump permit holders by having a free day when they, you know, they paid $40 for their free day. I just think it, it makes everybody's quality of life better if this town looks a little better. And I think everybody will be happier. And there may be a few grumps who are, you know, grousing about it and they'll probably grouse to Tom, because everybody does, because it's what people do. They go to the transfer station and grouse. But, uh, you know, I think on overall, I think it'd be an improvement. Alright, so then we, uh, yeah, we're done, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's what we are gonna lead to, getting that finished up, send it over. We'll set up some stuff to go and do, so I could try to get in up there too, just to talk with them about that. Um, then we'll have a better idea.
So, does everybody get? Does everybody get in on their town email? Does Stacy have town email?
Yes, I do, yes.
Okay, so you guys look at it? So, cause, um, I, I think that Megan will put this on your town email and I'll get it out in the next few days.
Yes, just send that right out to her, to her and we'll make sure everybody gets it.
Okay, excellent.
Perfect. Um, then we're gonna move on to, uh, public comment. Is there anybody in there, Megan? I don't see anything on the screen, but.
Mindy Jo? Hi, this is Mindy Jo down here in Verdict Park. How are y'all tonight?
How you doing?
Oh, actually I'm doing pretty good. Um, I actually, my brain, just work with me here. I'm trying to figure out how to complete this task at hand. Verdict Park has been a dump for a long time. Okay, I started complaining about this place and the different things going on down here as far as trash and garbage and hordes back probably 2015. Now, I'm the fiduciary of the estate. I've only not even been seven months yet. Um, I'm being held accountable for 30 days of cleanup after 30 years of garbage buildup. Alright, um, I got a letter sitting at the mailbox now that, because they're sending it out right to the fiduciary instead of me personally. However, is there anything within the town that could get me any kind of help? Because I'm here to tell you, I've been doing this on my own, by myself. I even learned how to run an excavator. Get this job done. Alright, um, I have a cousin that's able to be here a couple of times when he's got time and, um, actually Mr. Don Verdict's helping me when he's got some spare time. But it's not enough. 30 days is not enough for nothing, period. Um, I've tried every other avenue. I still can't even get the zoning dude to walk through with me to tell me what I gotta do to get up the code. He was supposed to come down and then there was a matter with his job. And then he was supposed to contact me on Saturday. I understand we had a storm. But a quick phone call of, I can't make it because of the storm would have been awesome. So I've gone to a dead end with the select board. So I decided to come to you guys and see if you guys got any suggestions or if you're just gonna shove me along the way.
Well, we, this is what, this is really not our job to, to, we'd love to help. Um, but this is what we're talking about, that people need a little, I, I think we ought to, we ought to.
Actually, I have an answer, Megan, Megan.
Yes.
Okay, I have an answer for that, for, well, part of that. Years ago in Bennington, there used to be this thing called Greenup Day.
Yeah, they still have that.
Okay. Well, I have it here, because my mother was great at one man's junk is another man's treasure. Alright, and we used to go around, she made us pick other people's garbage and she would collect things, fix them up and resell them. Okay, and her tag sales ran longer than three days. However, everything would be packed onto our porch and then the following weekend we would unpack it back into the yard.
Yeah, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I think we've been talking about incentives, Mindy, and that's, I, I think that we should have one of the, the highway department's trucks available to us.
I don't think that's gonna work, because you, you're, you, your definition of drunk, junk, Megan, and my definition of junk is gonna be two different things.
Yeah, no.
Truckload.
I think everybody should stay on the garbage, not, 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 not junk, but garbage. Garbage bags everywhere and the trash.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
With more than meats on them.
Uh, I, wait, John, what do you want to say? I see you getting ready to say something.
Um, I, I, thank you, Mindy Jo, for calling in on that. Um, basically, I think, uh, we just have to try to move it along to see if we're gonna get any support from the select board and this whole thing happens or not. I think that's where we're at.
Okay, but in the meantime, just so you know, um, Verdict Park, I suggest, I haven't even touched the house yet and everything I found in the yard is probably
Needs to be tore down.
10 ton of stuff.
That's a lot of money for the dump.
That's a lot of stuff. I didn't even realize Harvey had a horde going on down there, to be honest. But he did. I've uncovered it. I haven't touched the center of the house.
Right, I understand, I understand there's, it's a lot to do. Um, and if anything, we're, you know, the town's not gonna be like, oh, you have to clean this up in 30 days or you're.
Really? Cause I got a letter stating so.
Well, I mean, we're, 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 I'm sure the town would be willing to work with everybody. Um, if it takes longer, it's gonna take longer. It's just what it is, but I think what we're talking about here is just more, can we move people along to start doing something? Um, this is what we've had for a problem right along is it's just, nothing's being cleaned up. Or very little. So we're just trying to move people along and see if we can anyway and, um, just to start getting it done and making things look better.
Well, I do know I've complained to the old select board about the stuff that was going on down here with a certain family. And nothing was ever done about it, ever. You know what I mean? And it just got bigger and more. I've got pictures that would probably make you puke, not even kidding. It was that bad. Without no names, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
I'm just telling you, I'm in a hole down here, running out of time. And I was just looking for maybe insight on something else from like you, John, or Jim, or the other gentleman. Know what I'm saying? It's just, it's a big job. I've never done anything on this scale. I, I've never set out to be a landlord. I'm a security specialist betrayed. And I don't know why anybody would want to be a landlord intentionally, because I'm here to tell you.
It's def, it's definitely a tough, tough situation and you got your hands into a big situation.
Yes, sir, I sure do.
But, uh, I'd just say, keep plugging away at it a little at a time and, um, if, if, if we're able to do more here, I'm sure we'll help out if we can do more.
Okay, I do appreciate you guys at least listening, because that helps me more than you even know.
You're welcome. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for all you're doing, Mindy Jo.
Yeah.
Anybody else, Megan?
Donna? Donna?
Hi, Donna Lozon, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
Hi. Um, first I just wanted to say thank you guys for addressing these issues. And, you know, it's, I just really basically have a comment that to keep in mind, you know, we do have a vulnerable popu, population here. Uh, sometimes their circumstances get in the way, whether it's illness or disability or lack of transportation, economic hardships, which can contribute to blight, trash or junk, whatever you want to call it, which are terms defined by different people in different ways. Um, and some of these are poverty issues. And if it, it comes to pass that you create a system where you have someone going and meeting with these folks, it might be beneficial to try to figure out what that root cause is. Is it because someone doesn't have a car to get things to the dump? Is someone disabled and they can't physically, you know, move to, to move that, get things moved?
Mm-hmm.
What supports they need to make cleanup not just successful one time, but ongoing. And I'm sure that, you know, you guys will do the right thing there, but I just thought it was something important to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
That was really good, a good, good point, Donna. Thank you.
Thank, thanks, Donna. That's, that's along the lines of what I was thinking, was trying to do these things with the dumpsters, talking to people. I know there's multiple issues why people get loss of control of the, of trash. It just, it happens and then they get inundated and then they don't know what to do. So I think if we have some community outreach, we can work with people, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know what, because I don't have kids, so I don't know what kind of youth groups around, but I know like 4H, maybe it's something, a 4H project can help. You know, it's, I think if, if we just all kind of work together, we can come up with some good solutions.
Yes, and, and one of the things I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago too is that there, and, uh, Tom, I'm gonna add to it with, what Tom Schuie said. Um, one of the things is there is some, uh, items that could be already given to the dumps without a cost. Um, there's already programs, I guess, that are, that are taking care of some of that through the state. Um, you don't need a permit to, to dump and, uh, I think it's electronics and stuff like that. We can get a list from, from Schuie on that.
Recycling, recycling is free.
Well, yes, and some recycling stuff, but also metals that people have that, uh, you know, want to get that stuff out of their yard. There's lots of people around that are, that do. There's lots of people around that are, that do that for business now, picking up metals. So that's, you know, I think making people aware, Fred's mentioned a couple of times too and you just did again there, Michelle. Um, but making that aware uh of what's going on and what they can take away, I think will help clean up a lot of that stuff. Which we don't have that going on right now. There's nothing out there telling people to.
So maybe that would be another good way to spend money is more of a uh community awareness, kind of a um, community education. Where we have posters that say what's free and we have uh, you know, lists of, of the guys who come and collect metal and so forth and, you know, just have a real strong community um awareness effort.
Does somebody need a permit if they're just gonna go there to bring metal to the dump?
Most of metals don't go to the dump, I don't believe, that most people are just picking that up, scrap, scrap metals.
Yeah, I think, well, you can, but I, I think there's about a dozen, I know a dozen guys in town that take stuff either to Albany.
Right.
Or to North Adams. And uh, I don't want to name their names, but.
Right. But they'll, they'll come in and clean up. They'll come and clean up any metal.
Yeah, they'll come in and take it. All your little uh.
Anything.
Machines or any, anything.
Yeah, we should probably put a, a resource list together then and, and I'd like to know what the dump takes because I don't even know what the dump takes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What you can recycle and, you know.
Yeah, recycling stuff.
Um, Megan, did we have anybody else in that?
Hi, guys. Jim Coesus, Mason Hill Road. First of all, I've got to just congratulate you guys on just an excellent discussion you had today, um, tonight. Um, Megan and um, Michelle, um, hands up to you um, to be able to present something like this. As for Donna, I, Donna, I agree with everything you said that um, yes, we need to work with the people in this town. In that regard, Mindy Jo is doing whatever she can to clean up down at Burdick Park. I give her 200% because she is stepping forward and asking for help. There are lots of people out there that are not asking for help and have no consideration at all. Those are the ones that I think we really need to just somehow get out there and talk to them. Yes? If someone can get out there and talk to them, that's great, but with Mindy, if she's got a 30-day limitation there, I think the town needs to work a little bit more with her. Um, similar to at the racetrack, I'm not sure how many days they've been given to clean up that um situation down there of not fencing it in. I hear that there is a fence that might be going up, so I think we can all work together for those people that are coming forward to say they need help. As for those that are not coming forward, I think we need to come up with this ordinance. Um, I've, I've talked to Jimmy many times and said, you know, if we, if it takes four months to come up with a nice ordinance that we can all follow, let's come with the ordinance, but then give everyone 66 months during the summertime to do what they can with the idea that they're gonna know in six months fines will start happening. I'm all for, I'm all for allowing anything to happen for six months, but it can't go on forever. I mean, so at that point, after six months, we have an ordinance, we have fines. We've worked with everyone. We've gotten to a certain point. If they're not gonna do what they're gonna do, then yes, they have to be fined. They have to have an attachment or something um, on their properties because they're, they're not dealing with the public solution of making our town back the way it used to be many, many years ago. So I appreciate you guys. Let's mark this on the calendar, February 1st, 2022. And we'll see how long we can keep on this same railroad track going forward. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, I was wondering if maybe uh, John, you know uh, Mike Gardner and, and Fred Miller pretty well. Maybe you could tell them what Mindy Jo said and maybe she can get down there.
Yeah, I'm sure they're gonna hear it. I'm sure they're gonna hear that pretty quick here.
In a nice way. I mean, I think Fred would just sweet talk her and she'd feel, she'd feel better after she talked to him, even if nothing happened.
I get, Megan, is there anybody else? In there?
Mindy Jo?
I have no problem with reaching out to Mike and Fred. I've emailed them myself before I even said anything. That way it was already to them before it come out of my mouth because I have respect.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
We respect what you're doing and we appreciate it.
You guys, I, I, I had to send pictures out because I, actually, the UPS dude showed up today and he said, I cannot believe the phenomenal job that you're actually doing. It actually made my day. The UPS guy. So, you know, I just, I just needed, I just needed to vent. And I, this is like my first planning board meeting, so I wasn't sure what it was even about and I just needed to jump in and get feedback. And I got it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night and God bless.
We make a motion then.
Yeah, that, that's it, Megan?
Yep.
Okay, that's it for that. Um, look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Good. Second, whatever.
Michelle's motion, Jimmy's second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Night, guys.
Alright, have a good night.
Good night.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.